Let's keep going. Okay, I don't know when Emilio came and went, but it's... Okay, Emilio, your turn.
I'm passing.
We're in number nine, outreach budget. The board has approximately 4,250 on its purchase card. Part possible action by the board authorizing the approval of the following expenditures to assist in outreach efforts in contacting stakeholders in the neighborhood. The outreach chair to provide members information. And we have A, flyers, $300 each, 5,000 pieces plus design. Door hangers, $300 each, 5,000 pieces plus design. Posters, $300 each, 5,000 pieces plus design. Newsletter, $750, 1,200 pieces plus design. Event, World Cup Soccer Game. The World Cup lasts from mid-June to July 2014 and takes place in Brazil. Possible action by the board includes determining how the board may be involved in showing the World Cup in our community, how the board may team up with area neighborhood councils to support this event, and whether the board will approve an expenditure to advertise the event in an amount up to $300. Vendor Carlos Jimenez has suggested that the cost of the event for an outdoor screen to show the game would be $8,500 and an indoor event approximately $40,000 to $50,000. Now, Emilio has brought this piece of paper that, please, Emilio, did you read it?
But I will not read it. It's a three-page paper. That's why I gave it to you. I will tell you what is, what I mean doing with this. I will not read all of this since you have it. All of you have it. We plan to do an outreach program with the World Cup camp. The first initial venue was the park in Caguenga in Santa Monica. The outdoor place is not available. It's been booked by another event. They have an indoor place, which is not really accurate. It's not too clean. Probably we have space for 150 to 200, which is, I don't think is, will be the best idea to try to hold for the World Cup open event. It's space for 150 people. I don't think it's the best. You have one period, I give you.
I know. I'm sorry.
In a little meeting that we had with Amber, she was saying if we can combine this event with another neighborhood by us, which is the one Hollywood...
Hollywood United.
Yeah, Hollywood United. And I spoke to Mr. Tom, who is the president of Hollywood United, and he said, he said that he would like to do it. He would like to have more information. He invited me tomorrow to talk to the board and see if we can do it. We have either choose that park in Santa Monica and Caguenga or Florentine Gardens, which is in the, in Hollywood Boulevard, which is, is located in the north side of Hollywood. And that will be in Mr. Tom's council. She already wrote the prices of those events and mostly the vendor, but I don't know if you read about the newsletter that we have. We are forming. I believe one of the, the best way to reach our community is to have in a newsletter, and we don't have it yet.
Yeah. We actually, we didn't, I didn't send it writing and sending it out for a couple of years.
Yeah. But is this, is actually now or...
CHNC. I sent you a copy of the last newsletter.
Okay. Well, and the difference will be we're trying to do it in English and Spanish. I don't think you have it in Spanish. So far, we believe that we should have one in Spanish since we have a big community, Spanish community here. That will be one of my goal to have it in both languages. And in the future, to reach which other language we can have it. So it's implying more things to do, more investigation, but we can, I think we can do it. So I don't know. That's, that's all what I can say at this moment.
If you'd like, I'd be happy to tell you a bit more. Just I'll summarize what's on there on the newsletter. What we did, there's a community spotlight at the last page. And that, what I did on an as, on an as needed basis, I focused on an organization or a business in the community, just to bring a little bit of attention to, for example, one of the vendors that provided, that always gave us a discount for food. I put a couple of vendors there on two or three months running where we just talked about what they, what their venue was, that kind of thing. There is also the lead again, there were two articles on the first page, one of which was the whatever might be of most interest at the time. There were issues that the community was facing. I did an election newsletter as a matter of fact. You all may have received that one. That, I think, was one of the last newsletters that was published. Yeah, that would have been March. There is also a community calendar, something that listed events like the meetings that we have, the, the board meeting, the plum meeting, were the only two that were regularly scheduled, but also the safety committee. The, the calendar actually gave information on other community interest whatevers that were occurring within Hollywood. And I'm trying to think, those were the primary things that were on that, that were, that I put on those newsletters. It, it was adaptable enough that we could change things as, as the need occurred. There is one other thing that I'd like to mention about getting the word out. Maybe I'll wait until a more appropriate time for that.
Any public comment regarding this item? Siggy first, so you know that guy.
Actually, there were Scott and Denise made comments, but they didn't, and Scott, well, they're gone already.
But did they write them down?
Well, Denise did. Scott did not.
Okay. Would you read those first, please?
Denise says, "I'm not against the project. I am against the money being spent. The board of board is going to give the rest of the remaining budget to the Hollywood beautification team. I think the money should be spent buying spare books for schoolchildren, uniforms, sporting equipment, musical instruments for a donation to CAP and to HBT. These items are long-term and are not a 24-hour party."
Siggy, Anna, I'm sorry, Anna, Scott already made his comment at the beginning, so we've got comments regarding that item.
Does, you got anything else?
The cards, that's...
Yes. Siggy and Tom.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of little things. Actually, they're big things. First of all, a little correction, it's Tom Meredith, and he is not the president. The president of Hunk is Susan Swan. And Tom, I think, is outreach, maybe? I don't know. So he's not the president, so you need to get him, make a presentation to the full board if you, if you met with the outreach thing. It's just a little side note there. The other thing is on what Scott earlier mentioned, but, excuse me, with the venue. If Hunk is going to be the main sponsor on this, then it's okay to have, I think, to have the event at the Florentine Gardens. Issue number one with that, though, anytime somebody says, "I'm donating my space," there could be a possibility of a future conflict because he also is a developer. He might come to you guys later and say, "Hey, listen, remember I let you use the venue, and now I want you to support me." So clear that up with the city attorney before you agree on anything. The second thing is for you guys with this money, I know what you were talking about with the indoor and outdoor screen, what is not clear, is it rented? Is it bought? Will it be stored someplace? Because in that case, if it is being bought, it can be used for future events. You need to be clear about that. If it is rented, it's a very big amount of money to rent for one event, and I would agree with Denise, it should go someplace else. But tailing on what she said, whatever the previous board might have made a promise to in regard to funds to someplace else, you have a discretion of the money now. If you think it is better serving your board and the community to do an outreach event to bring more awareness to what you guys do and how you can help them, then that is your decision to make. Going back into the event, I still like to see on the agenda where it is. I, I like the wording a little bit here and there, but it's in Brazil. But you want to hold the event here. That I would have loved to see here for an event to be held either within, but that's not on the agenda. So therefore, setting aside any money, I'm bringing up an issue. And that was something that I was hoping to have avoided by this meeting because you need to set aside this money. So for that, that's my comment on that.
This, this... Denise, follow, follow.
Bob? Okay. I find this agenda very confusing. Number one, on, on series of A through D, and it says flyers, 3,000 each, 5,000 pieces. It almost gives me the impression that you just blew on the budget if we take $300 each and multiply by 5,000. Now, I'm assuming you want, I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, you wanted the total of 5,000 pieces, or the total cost, four or 5,000 pieces is $300. That, that was a little confusing, my interpretation of it. The second thing is I confused about vendor Carlos Jimenez, who that person is, and I, I don't know if that vendor's going to be, if that vendor's services or materials going to be used in terms of expenditures, or if that vendor just has the expertise and was able to give a cost estimate. So I, I, it's hard to follow that. So, and maybe the board can, or the, or maybe we could, the board can elaborate who the vendor is, because that, that was confusing, too. And, let's see. And then the, let's see, the, this white paper here, I think part of it may be for another agenda item, if I'm correct. Maybe I'm seeking clarification on that. Because item, item 10 talks about newsletter YouTube channel, creation of CHNC online radio. This has some numbers in that, so I'm not sure if this is covering items nine and 10.
No, that's not.
It's not just item nine?
If you just wrote these and brought it, we are just seeing it right now. So it has not been passed through the board yet. So we're seeing it at the same time that you're seeing it, so we are not so sure. I don't think that is following the agenda.
Okay. So let me, I'll comment on this item, and I'll assume it's for this agenda item. I, I'm trying to understand, and maybe it's me not knowing the technology, the YouTube channel, radio station hosting cost options is, the radio station is separate from YouTube?
That's actually for item 10 as well.
Okay, so this handout has nothing to do with agenda item nine?
The first part does.
Because I think you just said it.
The first part does.
Okay. How many pages has to do with agenda item nine? What, and it doesn't explain there?
It's very confusing.
I think pages one and two have to do with the outreach event. What this is, is a general overview of the entire outreach campaign that...
But this isn't identified by agenda item number?
No, this is not. As I said above, I'm sorry, but Emilio brought this out of what the research, the explanation and work that we have been working on, but he hasn't added it to the agenda as it is, and we are just reading it at the same time that you guys are reading it. So don't follow this with the, I mean, Emilio will explain later on, but...
I'll just, I'll just finish my comments then. So whether it applies to nine or applies to nine and 10, those are some of the questions I had. Again, maybe an explanation of the costs, why they do so much, were there cost estimates? I mean, this may be based on a meeting and just some rough numbers off the top of someone's head, but the, the equipment, it includes, here's an example, this is on the third page. The equipment is $8,500 for outdoor setup, $4,225, which sounds like a refined amount. If I was going to say 4,000 or 4,200, if they have $25 right in there, that sounds like a very precise, more precise amount to me. Given that amount for the indoor setup, it talks about, I, I would expect that there'd possibly be a specific cost estimate, otherwise I would see it being rounded off, but I, but I could be wrong. Price includes sound projectors, screens, and electrical, and transmission wiring, so that, I don't quite understand all the details of it. And then I think was mentioned before, if Florentine Gardens is used, there's a couple things is, there, there may be, and this is where I'm not, not an attorney, the in-kind, an in-kind valuation. There's a financial value of someone, and that, of course, all the advice is always the city attorney, that they are your legal advisors. So anyway, that's, that's my comment regarding that.
Thank you, Bob. George?
Yeah. Just going through the numbers here, items A through D is about $1,650. You're starting with $42,500 available, now you're $2,600. How much of the 2,600 are you intending to put to item E?
Do you want an answer right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. What we have right now is, we have a budget that we can, that we have in a P card, that we have money there that we can use for outreach purposes. And we have to make a budget for the next fiscal year. There are some things that we can spend right now, instead of just taking money to waste, that we will need them either ways, that are posters, flyers, door hangers. Besides, the event happen or not, if the event happens or not, that's separately. If the event happens, we can put Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, this is our website, this is what we are here for. By the way, first event is going to happen this time, if it happens. If it doesn't happen, it will go with the way. Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, that's what we are for, this is for the community. We need to give the word out to many people who do not know the existence of the neighborhood councils regarding Central Hollywood that we are here, and that we can use with the P card money for flyers, for posters, door hangers, and newsletter. The event is separately, I believe, in order for us to allocate money for the event, we will need to have a special meeting for the outreach event only, when we will have more information, when we will have vendors' information, when we will have clear up possibilities of conflict of using different locations, and we can decide on that. But for the outreach in general, besides happen, the event happens or not, we can allocate some money before, I think that is June...
12.
12 or 16?
No.
16. Because if we don't use the money of the P card by June 16, we cannot use it.
Okay, so what in E is only...
That's good, please.
Here's the issue. We have money that can only be spent in a, in a specific way. When Denise talked about the HBT funding, that would have been done as a NPG. The P card, the purchase card that Milagros is referring to, has a limit. In order to make sure that those funds that still remain, that were not given to HBT, that were not allocated to anything else, that, in order to make sure that those funds do not go back to the city's general fund, a specific action has to be taken by the board requesting that the remaining funds be loaded or made available through the P card to be used for whatever expenses may come up in the next few weeks. The bottom line is that that action has to be taken today in order for it to be done in a timely way.
Okay, I know that the money's going to evaporate.
Right. No, it doesn't evaporate. It goes back to the city's general fund.
Yeah, okay, but it's, it's not available to the NC.
It's no longer available to the NC.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So this should have been worded a bit differently, and unfortunately, it was not. There are two things that are being discussed simultaneously, which is probably where the need for this clarification is coming up. What has to be done first, and the board should act on that first rather than all of this other discussion, is to make a, a motion or make an approve a motion to request that the funds be put or made available through the P card. Okay?
And that saves the money.
That's it. That saves the funds.
Okay.
But if it is not done, then the rest of this...
Okay, okay, so, but you don't have to save what that $42,500 is going to yet.
What, what they're discussing are the possible means of spending the money.
Okay.
But that is premature.
But the motion is just to put where you can hold on to.
The motion that should have started this conversation is that the, the P card has to be...
Loaded.
Yes, with whatever funds remain.
Okay.
For outreach, and you can designate. If you allocate this for outreach purposes, then it's clear. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing is that whenever there is something, an issue about funding, about money, it was said that we need to be really very specific and try to put as much detail as possible. And what Denise is saying, with the story right about beautification and all that, that need to be done through a demand warrant. So that's not a NPG. Yeah, an NPG. I mean, if we do it right now...
We can't, no.
Yeah, that's what we cannot do it. But we can use for outlets like posters, flyers, all the things, we can use it. Yeah. Emilio, I'm sorry.
The reason why I mentioned $8,000 is just to be clear. When we initiate the process, when Milagros called me to do this, if I can do this for the World Cup event, there was a possibility to have it outdoor. We requested, and if we requested outdoor event, we have to know the price. I cannot go and say, "Am I have this, but it costs..." I have to go with the vendor and say, "How much is it cost?" This $8,000, I'm not number applicable to this event, but I have to bring it as a being clear, what I'm doing as an outreach, I have to really have everything on table, and that's why it's that number. That number will not, we will not expend that money, even if we have it. We don't have it, but even if we have it, the space is not available. So that's what I want to clarify that. And I only follow what they, what the vendors say, what it is.
And you mentioned that there were two different vendors, right?
Yeah, we have to have different vendors, by the way, because the treasurer asked me to have different vendors and see, need to compare what, who are going to make this business with.
Have we asked either of the council members for support for this thing?
I have a letter for Mr. Ofero and Mr. Lavanch. I will send it tomorrow. They, I believe it's Eva from Mr. Ofero told me to call her on Monday. I have Mr. Torres from Mr. Lavanch, which I will contact him. I don't know if that's the right person that they told me.
Silvus, Silvus...
Silvus de la Cruz.
Silvus de la Cruz.
Is the person that might be who's found. And it may be that other area neighborhood councils will be interested in participating.
Yeah, if that is not a conflict with, with my ass, I don't know.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I have her email. She mailed me information.
Yes.
Okay, if that is not a conflict, I will contact all those. I'm just trying to be careful. I've been in business, but I'm not in public business, believe me, and I'm really not one of getting problems with nobody.
It's very common for the neighborhood councils to participate as a group.
Amber told me that, that it is, but I, I heard the comment for the former president. No, no, it's okay. I will go, and Amber told us, "You can feel free to reach out with them and see how you can work together." She said, "Impact, it'll be good if you work with that together with somebody else."
Any public comment regarding this?
Yeah, I was just going to sum it up. Remember the holiday party? That was two neighborhood councils. That was East Hollywood and Hollywood, Hollywood City District, and it was a great event. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of outreach was happening. So teaming up, there was one event where the first holiday party, we had four neighborhood councils teaming up. So there's no limit on how many NCs you can get involved to get the word out. Just the one thing is make sure that you have a facility, there are no strings attached. Preferably a public facility. If you can host it over here in the yard, you know, with the, with the closing of the street and get the fire department, make it a big thing, who knows? But I'm just saying, you don't have to put yourself in a bind by figuring, "I have to do this on our own," or the NC, "We have to do this out," you know, as one, you can bring in. And I like the idea of getting the council offices involved. It's a big event, use their tools. And they can make it happen.
There's still been a motion.
Okay, Bob, we need to finish the public comments.
Right, no, I'll wrap it up real quick. Yeah, I'd take, you could always take with a grain of salt or trust but verify, as they say, like if someone says you can't hold it outside the district, you could always check on that. And then secondly, if you said that specific numbers need to be added up, you may want to make sure, I mean, you have a number down here, indoor event of 4250. I, I know, like in the budget process, you have numbers that you allocate, and then you can re-spend it later, and you can verify that. But when I, if I ended up correctly, items A through D was 1,650.
Yeah, so I said.
Okay, good. Yeah, George said that, and then I double-checked George's math.
Oh, dear.
But anyway.
Trust but verify.
Yeah, trust but verify. But anyway, so if you are, I mean, a suggestion may be, I mean, you're focused on outreach, and you may be able to hold this money, if I understand correctly, and you want to have enough that adds up to your, your dollar amount. That's all I'm saying.
Any other public comment? Word comments regarding this item? Marcy?
Me, not, yes.
Oh, sorry, public comment, Marcy.
About like the venue. I was up there, what I noticed also when I was like overseas during the last World Cup, they would, different areas, they would close the street, you know, have that instead of a venue, they'll just close the street down, just make a big event. Yeah, that would be a possibility or not.
You are now in the outreach committee, so you can help me, you're working on that. Marcy?
I need two or three proposals for each item.
Okay. Any other board comment?
Yeah, let me see.
Got it.
We do a lot of this sort of thing. We talk to the city council, they will contribute financially to it.
Yes, they will?
They do, because we always get them.
How we have two...
First thing, when I want to do something else, I call the council number, I say, "We have this thing, we need this money."
Okay.
Fourth of July, we, we wanted a firework problem in the country. We called the city council, they give a special card for the police department. So you can have the police department as well as yours. Keep very close with the council. Keep on bugging them, they have money. I get them. I'm telling the truth.
I, I agree.
It's discretionary.
Lot of money. I, I tell them to clean up my 30 trees. I say, "You know, the trees fall, and do it."
Okay, entirely.
You know, don't need the money, not use their money.
Okay, so we need a motion for this. Please, can somebody make a motion for the P card?
Okay, so the motion we need goes...
The remaining funds.
To take any funds remaining, move those funds onto the P card. Is that right? Or is that not right?
What you're moving to do is to authorize loading the P card with, and with a total of $4,250.
Actually, we have more money.
Yes, but there's another, there's another motion, remember? And that is a different thing. This one is going to be specifically intended for outreach, is that correct?
Yes.
The $4,250 is what you want, and so the motion that you should be making, if you want to make it, is to authorize loading the P card with $4,250 for, to be spent on, for outreach purposes.
You should make that, because I'm not sure I finished all my training for finding it.
On the P card?
It does not matter. You just can't vote.
Well, I can't not vote for my own thing.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
I've already tried to do it once.
Thank you.
Is anyone going to make the motion then?
I make the motion.
Is that way, Marcy? What, what name?
Wait, 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 man. Put on the money.
Okay, go ahead, do it, as long as we do it. I just, we have two hours.
Excuse me, hold on for a second.
We have a lot of items to go to.
Yes, I know.
Okay, let's make the motion. And let's try to keep moving it. Okay, Marcy, go for it.
And you can say up to, that you spend up to $4,000.
The reality is, this is 72 hours ago, but the P card has $6,081. Okay, that's, that is without the expenses we had generated. One was for $50 for ink, and the other one is your earning. So I accept the double check on money.
Can you make a motion for this, Marcy, please, so we can just move on with it?
Sure.
Okay, make the motion.
Well, I make the motion to approve this $4,250 for the outreach program.
No, what you're authorizing is to move the funds from wherever they may be allocated at this time to the P card, so that it can be used on the P card. If you don't have that specific language, they're gonna bounce it, write it, you're a T, you got it.
But here the problem, I don't have the specific amount of money.
Doesn't matter.
See, we have it. We, that's what Amber said. She said the couple were $6,000 something. So we just make...
It doesn't matter, you're still only moving to authorize whatever funds remain.
Or they may go the money from whatever funds are to the P card.
For outreach purposes.
Okay, anybody seconding? Emilio seconded. In favor, everybody can vote by Peter, right? On funding?
Yes.
Everybody has a training? Okay. All in favor? All people could come vote for funding in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
No, no, really, you should, you need the vote call and you need to have the paper for that.
Vote by name.
Vote by names, and then you have the paper for that.
Okay. Remago Rata.
Yes.
I have nothing to write.
Okay, just got that, so I can...
Milagros Lizarra.
Yes.
Emilio Vega.
Got it.
Marcy Colachia.
Yes.
Figur Vamos?
No.
He's still abstaining, so here's one.
Okay, no, he cannot vote because he has not had the training.
Right.
And it's not even abstaining.
No, he cannot vote, because he cannot have the training.
And then, Punam?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's not called.
All right.
I mean, he cannot vote, not abstaining, no, no, no. Yes, he has not had the funding training yet.
He's not finished online at all?
Yeah, no, I watched the video, but I haven't received the certificate. I just don't want there to be any problems with my stupid vote.
If you really received the certificate, you didn't finish.
But let's go, let's keep moving, Emilio. He is not sure.
So votes, you have it in favor, that one's done.
Okay, let's get the pencil.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so regarding this, so Item, number 10. Discussion and possible action creating additional... Well, wait a second. Regarding 9, for the event, the item number E, we need to create a motion to have another special meeting for that item, right? To discuss that item when we have enough information. I think we have already discussed that the outreach event, the item E, 9E.
What more information?
Do we need a motion for that? Or not?
Yeah, you just call E, you're ready. We need a motion to...
Because, yeah, because that is on the air. So for the item 9E, is there any other public comment regarding this?
So you're doing a reconsideration right now, because you already voted on that item altogether to move the funds?
Okay.
So you have A through E?
The event still has to be approved.
No, it's all under the same item. That's what I'm trying to tell you. You have it under 9A through E. So you, but you already voted on Item 9 to move the money to that. So you basically...
To move the money for outreach purposes.
That is still all part of Item 9A through E, no matter how you look at it.
I would like to make a reconsideration to make a motion to allocate the money to the P card for any outreach purposes, and regarding the event of the World Cup soccer game, to have a separate, no?
No, you gotta make a recommend, first, you're asking for reconsideration. Remember that, what you did last time?
No, reconsider, then you gotta vote for that, and then you gotta vote for whatever.
So then you have to start all over.
You're starting all over again.
I would like, but I would like to take care of this event. Okay, finish it, please.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yes, we need to do this since right, because...
If you wanna do a reconsideration, which in this point, for obvious reason, because you already voted on that item without excluding Number E. If you wanted to have E separate, you should have voted 9A through D, and then E to be tabled for a later date. But you voted on the entire item altogether. So the best way to do this, to remember what Jay did last time, ask for reconsideration, whoever, you guys, basically everybody voted yes, re-hear the item, once the reconsideration passes, then you go in, then you make a simple motion to approve the same motion minus the item E, and have E tabled, and then you just move forward from there.
That actually, that's not appropriate.
Let me say something. C say correctly if you want to do, but that's a lot of long process.
It's a short process.
The amount we already, 4,250, you already allocated for the...
Outreach, yes.
So just leave it as it is, and then later on you can switch around, because it's allocation.
It's only an allocation.
It's only an allocation, we haven't voted in any event.
No, so you don't, just leave it there. Event is, later on you can shift the amount. That's what they...
Okay, but I think that Punam was right. The motion was just to move it for outreach purposes, but it didn't specify any of these items. So you haven't allocated money to any of these items. So none of these, A through D, have not been, had money given to them yet either, at this point. So you're okay, you don't have to go change everything around. So when you're ready to, when you find out what's going on at the World Cup, just schedule another special meeting, and then decide what you wanna do with all the money.
Can we make another motion? Okay, we already made a motion to allocate the money. Can we make another motion to spend in flyers, door hangers, posters, and newsletter? So we can start spending it.
You don't need to do that either.
Why would you do that?
This is an outreach thing. It now goes to the outreach to do, to get everything. They can then come back and say, here's a recommendation, this is what we wanted, and so...
So I will make a recommendation.
Yeah, I make a comment. We will have no time to have another meeting in between the World Cup open. We can say meeting and meeting, but we have to consider a time. I don't see us meeting between today and June 12 just for that. I don't think that will be time for anyone to do that. If there is no way to do it, but it's not something that we can switch it. The World Cup will open that day, no matter what we say. And that's why we have to decide.
The thing is that there was a possibility also to do the event by the end of the World Cup, which is in July. So you have more time, it goes from here to June 12, it will be really no time. But the thing is that if outreach would like to start getting serious about doing outreach, we can make a motion right now out of the outreach, out of the P card money that we have to approve from A to D to be expended. I don't know if $750 is for the newsletter. I think that that is not yet, it's on the air, right? You have to talk to Linda. So it will be from A to C. So we can start getting a designer, we can start printing them, and we can start doing some outreach for Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. And despite, despite the fact that there is an event or not, can be Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council only.
I agree, I agree. But I think that's perfect, so make a motion.
So first, public comment regarding that?
No, make the motion first. You have all kinds of comments. Make the motion first, because we'll be here for the rest of the day if you keep doing this.
Okay, I would like...
Debating, just so you know, debating without a specific issue. It's time consuming.
May I, please? May I, okay, can, okay, I know it's time consuming, but to do the things right right now, same what we did with Jay the last time. Can we just do the motion to clear this up, whatever we already agree with, and do it again? It's gonna take just a couple minutes. And do it again from A to C, and then get another motion?
The motion was already passed, the money's allocated. The thing right now is like from A to C. Yes, another motion either with public comments or not, Punam? Because you already, the motion already passed for the money. Let's go back to that.
Let's move it on and approve the motion.
Okay, Punam, George. Punam, George, and then we'll make the motion, that's what it... Okay, George?
Yeah, okay, that's right. The A through C should be allocated. There's certainly no hurry on E. And in fact, if you did wanna schedule a time for the event, it would probably be the final game when you have the last two teams. That's when you really wanna have your...
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the money that have been allocated, decided to be allocated in the P card to approve our work to spend from A to C. Flyers, door hangers, and posters, plus the sun. Anybody second the motion?
I do.
Marcy seconded. Anybody in favor?
Two.
One, two. Okay, in favor, please raise the hand and keep it raised now. One, two, three, four.
So that's Emiko Ratae, Milagros Lizarra, Emilio Vega, and Marcy Colachia. Is she in favor?
She in favor. Anybody against?
Yes.
Oh, Punam is in favor. Okay, that's it, she goes, yeah.
Okay. So we go to item number 10.
I have a card.
That's right, George has a card for you.
Yeah.